Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town Council meeting, October 60, 2018. At 7:00 PM, we're here at the Hobby Hearing Room. This is being cable cast currently on WCAT, and it'll be played back. Would you kindly lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands its right to be free, honest, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Court, please call your own.
Councilor Engman, here. Councilor Callow?
Present.
Councilor Christopher?
Yeah.
Councilor Tiering?
Good.
Councilor Serto?
Councilor McDuffie?
Here.
Councilor LaCorte?
Present.
Vice President Boncori?
President Beckio?
Present.
The minutes of the October 20, uh, the October 2nd meeting were circulated. I want to take a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion.
A motion has been made, the second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Public comment.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to read a brief statement about the Public Health Department. I would like to begin by thanking our town managers, James McKenna, Chief Justice Valenti, and Mr. David Cressman for their support and confidence in me to lead the Public Health Department over the last two years. It is with a happy heart that I share that I have not been chosen to continue in my role as the Director of the Public Health Department and Program Manager for CLIR. I was informed on October the 4th by our Town Manager and Human Resource Director that they have chosen to pursue another direction for the department and another candidate, Meredith Hurley, to become the Department Director. I was told that I had two weeks left in this role, but would be offered another position within the town. I am awaiting the details of the available position. My time working for the town has been a tremendous opportunity and that I am grateful to have had. I have had been committed and passionate to serve the community. I call my home and to be able to serve our wonderful residents. I will truly miss all of the wonderful people I have had the pleasure of working with and serving over the last two years. With the hard work of myself, the Council, the Police Department, CASA, and all of our supporters, the growth and formalization of a CLIR program over the last two years has allowed us to serve many people and families within the community. Also, the program has increased the funding of more than $100,000 a year, which is an increase of more than $70,000 in just the last two years. I'm disappointed that I am not moving forward in my current role of the town, but I will be working to ensure the continuation of all services and programs and set my successor up for a successful transition into the department. I will be providing the Council, the Town Manager, and necessary departments a transition plan to guarantee transparency and communication of all pending matters to be followed up upon. Thank you all for your support and the opportunities I've had with the town. I am truly grateful.
Thank you, Deanna. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Can I just thank her for her service?
Sure.
Thank you so much for working with us, you know, with the Help Your Recovery Coach Program. It really helped us get off the ground and it made us a role model for other communities and, you know, you put a lot of time and effort into it and I really want to thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? No correspondents. Committee reports, rules, and ordinance will postpone that. Hopefully, Councilor Boncori will be here. And Town Managers report.
So, um, this initial item is basically the, I don't know, that's not the same one. It's an item later in the new business. So, applications for residential parking for 2019 are now being accepted online. Next week is the last week for street sweeping and curbside leaf pickup is Sunday, November 17th and Saturday, December 15th. And the final farmer's market is this Sunday in French Square. I am also, later on in this meeting, concerning the financial management review that the Division of Local Services would provide. The last time we went through and pursued this was 2005. I think it would be good to have a refresher on it and have some outside eyes kind of look in at the financial management review. I also think it will give us a head start with some of our internal financial policies and fiscal policies that we have. So that's an item for later on. Otherwise, I'm still working on updating the maps so they accurately communicate the things that we discussed in the last meeting concerning the Center Business District, and that's another item later in the agenda. But some of the things that I've talked to with the different councilors concerning smaller changes and things that they would like to see in the project have been accommodated for, and I hope to communicate an updated version of the memo with the Council later this week with CLIR maps and hopefully informing the group about the nature of the project. And that is all from my office.
Okay.
Just, and we did speak about this offline, but just if you could give an update, I know I've had residents in my precinct on Tylenstone and Gerlestone that's had some national grid work.
Yeah.
And the, you know, the streets were only paved half, which I think, I think from my understanding is they were paved a little more than they were supposed to be paved. But I think a lot of the residents were expecting them to be paved all the way. And I, my understanding is, and thanks to the correspondents, is that, you know, they do a certain amount of work. Is there a possibility or would there have been a possibility for the town to say, hey, let's kick in this and just finish it from curb to curb? And how, can you just describe to me and to the residents how that works in the part? Because I know it did happen on Pleasant Street not too long ago also.
Sure. So, what you saw on National Tylenstone and Gerlestone was a restoration that resulted from a previous gas main installation. It wasn't a town infrastructure project, which is what most people are used to seeing is, you know, on our, on our infrastructure projects, there's been quite a few of them, we bring gas in first, they do their work, then we commit after listening. Yes, there is curb-to-curb restoration. The policy in town on utility work is not part of an infrastructure project or work in general is, one, we don't allow non-emergency work on a, on a street that's less than five years old pavement without them owning curb-to-curb. Those streets are 25 to 30-year-old pavement, so the policy on that was temporary trench patch and then go through a freeze-staw cycle, which is, you know, the winter months, and then come back in the spring or summer and do a mill and overlay a foot wider in each direction of the, of the trench, for the entirety of the trench. In this case, they had a backlog on asphalt paving and then the whole blockout led to the recent work. Because of that inconvenience and their failure to come back when they were supposed to, I was able to, you know, to talk to them to get them to go halfway, to get, to get more, more out of it. The streets were in kind of rough shape. The additional pavement there is about 4,000 square yard. Mill and overlays running about $22 a square yard, so it would be an additional approximately $90,000 if you wanted to go ahead and finish up that, that work. So, could we have jumped on their, on their, on their contract? Not really. We ran into some issues. We actually did it on Winthrop. I don't know if you all remember, we kind of, we were told by the Attorney General at that point that we weren't able, we shouldn't have piggybacked off another utility contract. So there was a little bit of a learning experience. On Winthrop Street, we did it, Flit Devro. So, no, we couldn't have jumped on their contract. Can we spend the rest of that work? Not out of my budget at this point, but if that's something you want to do, it's about $90,000 to finish the job there.
Thanks, Juan. I appreciate it. Any additional questions?
Yes. Could you explain a little bit more about the review from the Division of Local Services?
Sure. So that's actually an item later in it.
Oh, it is.
That's what, part of new business, but I can, I'll discuss it then.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. School Department, the school committee met last night, October 15th. Several items on the agenda were discussed. The new special needs van, they basically are asking, and it's part of a motion that you'll see here, to lease a van for special need transportation back and forth. They're also going to be able to use that van for other purposes at the school. So they're going to actually be saving money by actually leasing the van. There's a, there's a complete detail on the lease program in your package if there's any councils with a question on it. The longest discussion during the meeting during, well, first of all, the school committee, the superintendent, the council, and the Town Manager for their support in bringing more money over to the schools so we can expand the kindergarten classrooms. There was a complete in-depth program. It's very sophisticated, changing kids once they're in a kindergarten class, and now you're going to change, they're going to take them out of their class because the classes are going to be expanded. So now they have to take kids on each class. So it's, it's a very delicate, delegate program that, that the superintendent put together, and each one of the, of the members of the school committee was able to ask questions and so forth relative to it. Basically, the new classroom configuration is going to be 18 students with one teacher and one ESP, so. And that was just about it. Under Old Business, I'm going to skip the first item on the agenda because that's under Rules and Ordinance. That's the election ballot language. But we'll go to the second item that's under Old Business, and that's the potential hearing date concerning the Town Council appropriation for the construction of the town center and sewerage drainage. And Town Manager, would you like to comment on that?
Sure. So, with our last vote that happened in September, with the number of votes that we had, it passes muster under how the state laws are written concerning recusals, but it does not mean our muster under Town Charter. I don't want to pay a lawyer to fight a state versus Town Charter battle, so we are going to bring this up again. Due to the confusion and I feel like the lack of information that the voting members of the Council were brought when you were kind of voting in a little bit of haste at that point, so this is another opportunity to have a public hearing about it. I think that it will mostly center on several communications that I've had with the councilors and the memo that I provided and some updated maps so you can all have a better sense of what is happening with the project. We can talk about the particulars again, but I have been talking with the business community, talking with residents. I've been trying to hear out a fair amount of people that are involved in the area to make sure that they are heard in this process. The Assistant Town Manager offer has gone out, and I won't say their name because I, they haven't completely confirmed it. They were talking with their boss today concerning about their transition, but in November, that individual will be coming on, and depending on how this Council votes, that individual will be working in the Center Business District quite frequently to work with the business community and local residents and things like that, because it's not just this infrastructure project, it's the development that comes along with it as well that, from my perspective, we need some boots on the ground, really communicating with the people who are living there and impacted by this the most going forward and not kind of being reactive afterwards. So, this is something, just to kind of give the public a little bit of notice, that this will be coming up in the next meeting. They do have time, it being November 13th is the next meeting. If they have concerns, they can feel free to reach out to my office concerning them. And if any of the councilors feel like there's still some information lacking from what we've found over so far, it's not a problem. I like to answer the questions and I'm here to help inform you, so you feel good in your ability to make a vote concerning the topic. And with that, it's really, that, that we just needed kind of to put the hearing date out there and publicly communicate it so people knew that this is something that is coming up again, and people have the ability to come to the meeting if they would like. And again, ongoing conversation, these things aren't set in stone, and the projects kind of are malleable from time to time, but moving in that direction for the time being.
Okay. Any questions?
So, November 13th, that's, I was just going to say, just to confirm, so a public hearing, November 13th, for the Center Business District.
That's correct, sir.
Is everybody good with that?
Is that, we want to have the meeting here or at a bigger venue? Do you think there's a need for it?
Well, we're doing the senior center the 20th.
So we were thinking about the senior center for the 20th, but Councilor Engman, you're not in attendance on the 20th, correct? So, we wanted to make sure with the nature of the recusals that we had as many members here as possible, and it seems like the 13th was the date to line up for it. If you all think we should change venues, we could, after.
Can you check on that?
Yeah, after the last meeting.
Okay.
I'll leave it up to your discussion.
Any further discussion? Okay. New Business. I have several items under New Business, and I'm going to read them and I'll make one motion to refer them to Finance, okay?
Yeah.
Transfer $90,000 from General Stabilization Fund to reduce the Parks and Rec Enterprise Fund to approve a general subsidy fund. Transfer $72,524 from Capital Stabilization Fund. General Fund, new special article FY19, Coastal Resilience Coffin Park match. Authorize the payment of unpaid bills for the prior year invoices for fiscal 18. Authorize the school department to enter into a five-year lease agreement, $8,000, $8,10390 with Ford Motor Credit for special education. Transfer $5,500 from the Town Council Reserve to the Town Manager's general office supplies for employee recognition program. And finally, declare surplus floor model Safe Benton of Boston, model LA3-0787. I want to take a motion to refer all of those to Finance.
Motion to refer to Finance.
Do I hear a second?
Sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Under New Business, the Establishment of Human Rights and Diversity and Inclusion Commission. I understand Councilor Serto has given you that.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of our Town Council co-member, Mike Lacerdo, he's asked me to submit and propose the motions as, as outlined. The first is to create better lines of communication with the town committees and to make sure that the town, the individual committee and the Council goals are aligned.
You're doing the committee one, not the, uh?
The Town Council.
You have a human rights one to refer to.
I apologize.
TSCR.
So this, well, he had been opposite. The second motion is to give the Council some options on how best to address citizen council concern over diversity, inclusion, and discrimination issues within our community. It is not meant to point fingers, but more in recognition that every community faces these issues and what needs a place where they can be formally discussed and approved So I move that the Town Council vote to task the Town Manager with providing the framework for the Town of Winthrop to establish a Human Rights Commission and/or Diversity and Inclusion Committee or take any other action thereof.
Okay. A motion has been made. Do I hear a second on the motion?
Second.
Second. Second is made. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. On the second motion, could you read that one?
Yes, I would, Mr. President. Second motion is that I move that the Town Council vote to require a written report be delivered to the Council Clerk from each Town Committee on their accomplishments in 2018, the vision and priorities for 2019, and document any outstanding committee issues impeding their progress. This written report is due to the Town Council no later than December 1st, 2018. This report should also contain attendance records of committee members, dates of meetings scheduled in 2018, and the results of a roll call vote for committee leadership positions going into 2019, or take any other action there too.
Thank you. A motion has been made. Do I hear a second on the motion?
Second.
Second is made. Discussion on the motion. I would like to, if nobody else is, I would like to comment a couple of things. First of all, on the previous motion, I think we've been talking about Human Rights Commission and our Diversity Committee for quite some time, and it's great that the committee has finally put out some action on it. On the second one, you know, we have countless committees that report to the Council, and I think what's, what's trying to happen here, Councilor Serto and his committee, I think we're trying to make sure that everybody's on the same wavelength, that what the committees are doing, they're doing on behalf of the Council. And I think it's very, very important that we kind of take inventory of who's on those committees, what their actions are. I like to see minutes of meetings, I want to see attendance, so that those people that are on those committees are doing their job. So I think it's a great, a great move forward. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Councilor. I'll call on the Town Manager on this next one.
Sure. So, Financial Management Review comes from the Technical Assistance Bureau within the Division of Local Services, and they do financial management reviews. They've done it for a fair amount of communities within the state. It's a lot easier to get them to do it for free rather than pay a consultant to do the same type of work or have an auditing firm come in. In 2005, you were kind of in the midst of charter revaluation and things like that, so there was a fair amount of where are you going to wrest control within the government and what are the policies to get you off of spending one-time money. It was apparent then, as it somewhat is apparent now, that you use free cash each year to kind of stabilize your budget, and you do have a policy concerning your free cash and stabilization funds that goes to, but it's not very expansive beyond that. This is a way to, them to identify some of our weak points within our financial system and our strategies, but it can also provide us with some nuggets of wisdom of policies that we should be pursuing. And I think the fiscal policies that we put kind of in the back of our budget and what we communicate with the community of what we're doing with our money, I would much rather fall to a set of policies that have been agreed upon as a group and with outside auditors and things like that, rather than going off of kind of our gut instinct each year. I would like to fall back into policies, whether it be a town-school split, whether it be how we finance a capital plan long-term. Those are things where you talk about, for example, a capital plan you could finance through 6% of your free cash each year. You take 40, 4% of it is debt financed, but only up to a certain level of your total debt limit, and then you could put some of the new growth towards it each year, type of thing. You come up with a formula of how to sustain a capital plan over five years rather than year to year saying, oh, I got a couple of capital items here and there, type of thing. It's, it's this longer-term planning that I think I want to help the town adjust to so that the town isn't in the circumstance that it has been for the last few fiscal years of when you need something, you have to go to people in state-level offices and things like that and ask for favors. I would write, like to set this up as a little bit more self-sustaining. That's just an example. There's a fair amount of things that they could help inform us about, and I think that that is a good opportunity to take something that is a resource that's there for free, and it's the state, they're the ones that, again, go and decide receivership and go in and tear up union contracts and things like that. We have them as a resource to utilize when we're in a decent financial position, and they can help us kind of strengthen our financial position. And we can also, the scariest thing for me is getting a downgrade on our rating. That's, that's the thing that would be worse for us in terms of our borrowing and rates and things like that. I think that looking towards how do we ensure that we don't get our rate downgraded is the easiest step that we can take, and setting up policies to move in that direction are very informative, as well as I would like to take the next fiscal budget that we have, so the 2019, and with some technology I'm looking at procuring, we should be able to submit for the GFOA, which is like the Government Fund Office of the County Association or whatever. It's the national standard in terms of budget awards and things like that. I would like to seek a distinguished budget award in this next fiscal year, and I think that we will be able to achieve that. One of the elements is setting goals and policies and initiatives and stuff like that, but also in the back having a good deal of abbreviation, kind of like a legend to the budget, so what do the abbreviations mean? What are your fiscal policies? How do you fit into the region and things like that? Explaining out so anyone in the country could pick up our budget front to back and understand what we're trying to do here. We should be able to achieve that with kind of setting some of these fiscal policies and utilizing some of these other technologies. So, this is a very good opportunity that could probably come in in December or January, depending on when we line up in the system. We don't spend that much money, so it's not super, super complicated, but it would be good for me to get another set of fresh eyes to look at some of this stuff and work along with the CFO, as the CFO is on board in this process.
All right. I'll read the text of the motion and then we can open up to questions by the councilors, okay? A motion by the Town Manager that the Town Council requests that the Massachusetts Division of Local Services to provide a financial management review for Winthrop or take any other action there too. Do I hear a second on the motion?
Second.
Second is made. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion, questions by the councilors? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Thanks, President.
Yes.
Can I just ask the Council Clerk to host a finance meeting for November 13th at 6:00 at whatever location we're going to be having the meeting in.
I agree.
Okay. We're going to go back to committee reports. Councilor Boncori, are you ready?
Yes.
Rules and ordinance? Sorry, yes.
Rules and ordinance committee met on October 9th at 6:15 here in the Hobby Room. President and myself, Councilor Engman, Councilor LaCorte. We had four people in the audience, all people in the audience were speaking in favor of putting a van into the town of Winthrop, putting it on the ballot. First issue that we discussed was banning retail establishments in Winthrop. As I said, all four people that were present spoke in favor of putting that ballot on. The third issue was to determine ballot language and the date of election. And we have copy of the letter that had been sent by our Town Manager on October 3rd requesting extension to our moratorium for November 2000, until November 2019, or in the alternative till March of 2019. At that point, we had not heard back from them. I don't know if we have heard back.
We have not heard back.
Still not, not heard back.
I will, I will reach out again tomorrow.
We have, we reviewed certain ballot questions that were in other towns such as Newton. I know Newton, Ashton, Whalen, all putting this on the ballot. I believe, I think Dottie Knopf, you pointed out to Belmont, and a couple of other towns have also put it on the ballot. So we are collecting copies of ballot questions, and there was a motion to continue the meeting until October 24th at 5:30. So requesting a room for a meeting on October 24th at 5:30, at which time we will have a question and we'll prepare a motion to vote at the next council meeting after that date.
Okay, so there's more, nothing to, to accomplish tonight, which I was around.
She said November 24th.
October.
Okay.
Because it's Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I was going to say. It's a Saturday.
No, 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 no.
I have been in touch, I'm sorry.
Okay. Public comment.
Mr. Chair, Town Council members. I just want to make a comment on the Committee's Par론ist Report. I think it's a great idea, just to let you know what the Board of Health has been doing. Every year, we develop a work plan on each, on each thing that we're going to deal with. We update that as we go along. Our agendas and minutes for every meeting are posted on our Board of Health website while roll calls are listed, and also we submit a report in the Town's annual report. So I think we're trying to comply with that. I would make one suggestion, maybe you postpone till January 1st, ask people, because with the holidays, people are going to be away and stuff, it might be easier if we can cut that report into you by January 1st rather than December 1st. Thank you.
Anyone else? Dottie?
I would like to suggest, and I would like to thank the Council for their continuing interest and support. First of all, most of you received a mailing, and we talk about wording, and you all received a mailing recently about question one that's coming up on the nurse situation, as, as I did, okay? This will give you a very good example of why the wording is so vitally important. And also, if you remember, at that time, we were charged with getting signatures and we got almost 200. And people who signed were very, very concerned about the fact they misunderstood the wording. They thought they were voting for the state. They did not realize they were addressing Winthrop. So I would ask the committee, because we came away a little disappointed, Phil, I would ask the committee to really seriously share and work on the wording. would ask the committee to really seriously share and work on the wording so that it's definitively talking about Winthrop and our community. And I would like to leave you with, we also like to do the educational awareness, and I would like to give you the most updated the Office of National Drug Control Policy. It conducted a substance abuse survey with more than sixty-seven thousand participants, the nation's largest on drug, alcohol, tobacco use. The findings, it continues to be a very big problem for the middle and high school students with adolescent substance abuse for almost every type of illegal drug, including marijuana, cocaine, LSD, ecstasy, meth, as well as alcohol and prescription drugs. One in ten youths ages twelve to seventeen were illicit drug users. About two-point-five million new teen substance abusers are initiated through the prescription drug programs found in their family homes. Next was marijuana, with two-point-one million new adolescent users. John O'Neill, the Director of Addiction Services for the Manager Clinic, a psychiatric specialty hospital in Houston, Texas, said the study's emphasis on prescription drugs coincides with the upswing of patients addicted to such medications as marijuana in his clinic. There is a percentage that they are not as, there is a perception that it is not as harmful and that they certainly can't be as bad as the cocaine, the meth, or on-the-street drugs. Teens want to experiment, and if there's something that's easy access, they will experiment with it, O'Neill said. I really believe that helping parents and extended family members, friends through education around the dangers of not having medications sitting around or demonstrating the parent's usage thereof can reduce the amount of experimentation. We wholeheartedly support Winthrop's endeavor to ban. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes.
Hello. Lea, I was yoning with Casa. I was not planning on speaking, but since Dottie brought up some data I wanted to do with you guys, that, I apologize, I have a cold. In the spring of last year, Casa went into the schools and they did the Prevention Needs Assessment Survey. We do one every two years. The last data that we had was in two thousand and sixteen, but we have the presentation prepared for you all, and we are on the agenda for November thirteenth to do a presentation for the up-to-date data, so we'll have the two thousand and eight data to you guys very soon. We're presenting it to the town, the school committee first, which is on October twenty-ninth, and then we were, we're on the agenda to present all of you on November thirteenth, so we'll have more updated information on what the young people in our community are currently struggling with or find to be supportive. So I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Public relations. October twenty-second through November second, early voting is available at the town hall main lobby between ten AM and four PM, so if you're going on vacation and you're going to be out of town, take advantage of that. The remaining two thousand and eighteen street sweeping dates is October twenty-second through the twenty-sixth. Please remove your cars off the street. I see it all the time. Curbside leaf pickup, that's a special, dates set up November seventeenth and December fifteenth. You can contact EPW for more information, but the leaf pickup, I understand they have to be in bags, plastic, paper.
Barrels or, or paper composable bags, not plastic. It will not empty plastic bags.
And on November twentieth is the town council forum at the Delio Center at seven PM. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.